Jennifer is a law school graduate who joined the city attorney's office in June 2017 as a certified law clerk. Jennifer has successfully represented the city at administrative hearings, small claims court, and various code enforcement meetings and inspections. The initiative Jennifer displays in her ability to conduct research, obtain inspection warrants, prepare witnesses for hearings, and confidently present oral arguments have been invaluable to the clients. She is especially valued by her coworkers for her dedication, reliability, and enthusiasm, which is why she was chosen by her peers to be the City Attorney Office Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Okay, so next we're going to move on to the DARM department. And we'd like to start off with Amber Pioni. Amber has performed exceptionally ever since she joined the long-range planning division two years ago. After being with the city for only six months, the city experienced the sudden retirement of our historic preservation manager. As Amber was the only employee that had the required historic preservation certification, she provided assistance to management on historic preservation items while continuing to fulfill her other duties as planner on the long-range planning team. As a planner, her extraordinary skills at research, analysis, and writing have contributed to the outstanding quality of the documents our division has produced. Amber has worked overtime, sacrificing her personal time and family time and friends, for over two months to work 10 hours a day, five days a week, including some Saturdays, to meet a completion deadline. Amber also created and is now maintaining a tracking and analysis program to track and assess the impacts of planning and development on our 2,143 housing element sites. Congratulations. Also, in the DARM department, we'd like to recognize Joanna Garcia. Joanna is an outstanding individual, coworker, and employee. Joanna is a true professional who knows her job well. She serves in many roles and responsibilities such as assisting in the proactive team, training temporary employees, and administrative functions for rental housing. But she mainly works in close concert with the anti-slum enforcement team. Asset, Joanna is charged with the handling of all administrative duties and stays in close communication with Asset. Joanna has impressed the Asset team on many occasions with her insight and knowledge when assisting the inspectors in preparing our notice and orders. In addition, Joanna recently made a great contribution toward the efficiency and effectiveness of Asset. Joanna is a true professional and an essential asset to the Asset team and especially delight to work with. Congratulations, Joanna. Now, we're going to move on to the Finance Department, and we'd like to recognize Suni Jaffer. Suni is always willing to assist her coworkers and answer their questions. She is very resourceful and has always found answers to your questions if she didn't immediately have the answer, that is, which is rare. Suni is also very kind, whether she is surprising her coworkers with flowers from her garden, simply offering a kind greeting, or being willing and happy to help. Suni always finds a way to brighten other people's day. Suni is the epitome of what this award represents. She is knowledgeable, dependable, and respectful. It is an honor and pleasure to work with her. Congratulations, Suni. I'm going to call this name, not sure if he's here. Robert Garcia from the Fire Department? He may be out. He's, yeah, he's out in the field. So, we're going to go ahead and recognize someone else, but let me just tell you a little bit about Robert since his coworkers took the time to write this up for him. He recently accepted a position as an Assistant Training Officer at the Training Division, where he is responsible for introductory and ongoing training of fire engineers who drive and operate our engines and ladder trucks. He hit the floor running as he coordinated our most recent engineering exam. This involved working closely with the city's Personnel Division, where he provided guidance to outside raiders, coordinated special logistic needs for the exam, and validated test materials. During this time, Robert contributed to multiple rescue incidents. Due to his many contributions to the Fresno Fire Department and the citizens of Fresno, the Fire Department is happy to recognize Robert Garcia as its Employee of the Quarter for Fall 2018. Also, from the Fire Department is Christine Wilson. Is Christine here? Fire Investigator Christine Wilson has been a dedicated member of the department since 2002. In 2007, Christine joined the Fire Investigation Unit and found a challenging and rewarding assignment in her new position. Always looking to leave things better than she found them, Christine became involved in the Juvenile Fire Education Program, JFEP. In 2010, the funding for the program ended in the midst of the recession. Christine assumed responsibility for the JFEP, and she initiated the restoration of the JFEP by partnering with other Valley agencies who shared the same community-minded vision. In April 2018, the department and the Central Valley Burn Prevention Coalition hosted the first youth fire setter academy, thanks to Christine's initiative and leadership. Christine has a passion for helping people, and she is taking a valuable program that enhances the safety of our community and positively affects the youth who might otherwise have continued down a destructive path. Christine's work ethic and commitment to our community are worthy of recognition, and the Fire Department is pleased to announce Christina as the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. We're going to move on to the Information Services Department, and we'd like to start off recognizing Monique Ward. Is Monique here? As the One Call Center Supervisor, Monique has made positive impacts not only in ISD but in city operations as well. Her improvement in the call center and leadership of her team has raised the level of professionalism and knowledge based for the call center representatives. Many of the enhancements have been made in the call center include establishing a web presence, improvement in the working environment, implementation of text response, as well as updating and improving call center processes and procedures. She has been instrumental in handling call resolution, and we have received several phone calls from the public providing positive feedback for her customer service efforts. She has a great demeanor, always has a smile on her face, and is definitely an asset to ISD and the city. Because of her excellent customer service and improvements to operation, ISD is honoring Monique Ward as the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Okay, now, we're going to move to the Parks Department. And we're going to start with Andre McMahon. Okay, looks like Andre is not here. Oh, and they had a sign and everything. Okay, so I'm going to read a little bit. Is he going to come later? Is that what you said? He's on his way? Okay, we'll skip him for now, we'll come back. Okay, still in Parks. Let's go with Adrian Sanchez. Is Adrian here? Adrian is a hard worker, always shows up to work because of his dedication and passion for his profession. Despite the overwhelming amount of work that everyone has to do, Adrian consistently finds ways to help his coworkers. He performs a variety of tasks that keeps our parks clean and safe. He has helped out on a number of capital projects laying cement, and most recently updating and establishing dog parks. Adrian has recently stepped up to be a lead worker due to his impeccable work ethic. His consistently surpasses the job performance and expectation, autographing his work with excellence. Adrian is a standout employee, a huge asset to our department, and is very deserving of this award and recognition. Congratulations. Okay, we're going on to the Personnel Services Department. Personnel? Are you guys here? Okay, we're going to recognize Monica Sefuentis. Is Monica here? She's in China, wow. That's the way to go. Okay, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Monica since she's not here, and they took the time to write this for her. Personnel Services recognizes Monica as Employee of the Quarter. Monica is a true rock star when representing the city in small claims court and in administration of liability claims. Monica has yet to lose a small claims case, and she has contributed greatly to the reduction of open liability claims. Monica is consistently pleasant and courteous with claimants while she remains focused on getting the job done. Monica personifies exemplary professionalism even when challenged by others. We are happy to have Monica as part of our Personnel Services team and congratulate her for this honor. Okay, so we're going to move over to the Police Department. Andre's here? Come on, Andre. Andre is a friendly, positive, hard-working, enthusiastic, creative Parks Recreation Division employee who is responsible for coordinating year-round men's, women's, and co-ed basketball, slow-fast pitch softball, flag football leagues, and tournaments. Andre effectively collaborates inter- and intra-departmentally with vendors and the community to provide quality programs that foster sportsmanship, competition, and fun in the community. Andre is flexible and can always be counted on to offer support to other divisions and coworkers, including youth sports, neighborhood parks, and therapeutic recreation. Andre is a professional who continues to exhibit dedication and a passion for excellent customer service and program services, as well as professional development and integrity, consistently surpasses job performance expectation. So, congratulations. Okay, so now, we'll move on to the Police Department, and we'd like to start off with Al Albi Hernandez. Is he here? Albi began his career with the Fresno Police Department in 1983. Over the course of 28 years, Albi has worked numerous assignments, including patrol, mounted patrol, along with various tactical units. In 2011, Albi was the first officer to be assigned to the Employee Assistance Program. As with other assignments, Albi flourished in his new role. His commitment to the Fresno Police Department and its personnel are widely known across the Valley by other agencies who have sought his insight and expertise in handling critical incidents and aftercare of personnel. Albi is credited for initiating a peer support group for first responders, serving more than 60 individuals over the course of nine years. He also serves as a liaison for all critical incident stress debriefing, and is recognized as a catalyst for inclusion of all personnel involved in traumatic cause. Albi retired later in 2018. He has set the bar very high in the Employee Assistance Program, and his boots will be incredibly hard to fill. Congratulations. Also, in the Police Department, we'd like to recognize Jesus Torres. Is Jesus here? Officer Torres is assigned to the Southwest Policing District. Recently, an activation of the Shot Sparker System was broadcasted, immediately followed by a call of the shooting victim. Officer Torres had become familiar with shooting calls, and in particular, the area in which this shooting occurred. He took into consideration the gains associated with this area, time lapse, possible routes, and the fleeing vehicle's possible speed when deciding to intercept and stop the vehicle that drove by him at a high rate of speed. Excuse me, it's high rate of speed. During the traffic stop, he found the shooting suspect, the gun used in the shooting, plus two additional firearms located inside the vehicle. Within two minutes of the call being broadcasted, Officer Torres stopped the violent criminal. Officer Torres' traffic stop led to the arrest and the filing of the case and seizure of these firearms. Officer Torres volunteers as a Fresno Unified Mentor, where he interacts with Sunset Elementary School students weekly, thereby enhancing the Police Department's community efforts. For his performance and dedication, Officer Torres is very deserving of the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. We're going to finish out the Police Department and then go back to someone we skipped over earlier. So, let's also recognize Marissa Jackson from the Police Department. Marissa has been assigned to the Domestic Violent Unit for the past three years. She has been instrumental in the development of newer detectives who enter the unit. Marissa has handled some of the unit's most complex cases and always advocates for the victims of domestic violence. Her ability to sit with victims of domestic violence and gain their trust is simply amazing. Her efforts have definitely improved the percentage of offenders who are held accountable for their action. The Domestic Violence Unit repeatedly sees over 7,000 cases a year, and Marissa handles one of the department's largest caseloads. Marissa lectures and trains, and was recently acknowledged and praised for her informative presentation at Fresno State on the topic of domestic violence and victimology. She is truly an asset to the Domestic Violent Unit, and we are proud to recognize her for her efforts which go beyond the call of duty. Congratulations. Also, in the Police Department is Virginia Penalosa. Is Virginia here? Virginia is the first employee to be assigned to the newly-created Public Records Act Request Station in the Police Records Bureau. When the Public Record Act, or PRA, processing for the Police Department was decentralized, there were many challenges with the process, including lost and mishandled requests and not being able to meet the state's 10-day response requirement. Virginia was informed about the known inconsistencies, and she was put in charge of analyzing our faulty PRA system. The PRA systems were centralized, and Virginia was asked to create an efficient system with tracking to ensure we respond to our PRAs within the state mandated 10 days. Virginia is very analytical and discovered many problems with the pre-existing system and came up with solutions. Virginia worked with the City Attorney's Office and the Department Attorney, Larry Donaldson, to develop processes to meet everyone's need and to fix the inefficiencies. Virginia has done an outstanding job organizing our PRA station and making PRA responses an efficient process, greatly benefiting the Police Department and the city and those making PRA requests. Congratulations, Virginia. Okay, and from the City Council District 7 Office, we'd like to recognize Alyssa Stevens. Alyssa is very deserving of this recognition. She is not only friendly, she is always willing to step in and step up to help. Alyssa was directly responsible for the Granny Park Kaboom Grant that gave life to green space for so many impoverished families that didn't have access to any park. Alyssa also helped formulate the Senior Center Project by helping write the white paper to council on our findings to get a senior center for the city of Fresno. She has gone above and beyond her realm as a worker and a staffer. Congratulations, Alyssa.
It really gives me great pleasure to be here this morning. This is going to be the last time that I ever turn up at one of these events, but I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you, and to people who are not here, maybe watching from wherever they are. You know, it's been almost eight years for me. In December, it'll be eight years that I was on the City Council. And I know I've said it before, but I'll say it again, and maybe you weren't here to hear me say it. You are the best bunch of truly dedicated public servants that I ever had the pleasure of working with. This organization is so agile and so responsive and so caring about people. If it's a downed tree in the middle of the night, if it's a burst pipe, if it's a call for law enforcement or fire, or I see our firefighters dragging tables and chairs out of people's homes to protect them, in addition to protecting life. I mean, you folks do an incredible job, and I've had an opportunity to see that firsthand. And I am sincere, and it has just been a pleasure working with each and every one of you over the course of the past eight years. So, thank you all very much for all the support you've given me. I've said some crazy things sitting up there over the years, but really, the people who live in this city, the people who you serve day in and day out, are so blessed to have the people of this organization working for them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, thank you all very, very much for the work that you have done and continue to do. Alyssa is one of those fantastic people, one of you fantastic people, and I think the city clerk here took some of the thunder away by revealing all the wonderful things that she has done, that she has. Working on the Senior Center, it's going to happen. One of these days, it's going to happen. When the revenue comes in, we're going to have a Senior Center that's going to eclipse anything else in the Central Valley. And when that occurs, hopefully sooner rather than later, when that occurs, it's because of the efforts of this lady right here. Fantastic work, did all the work. Very, very proud of her on that project. The groundwork and the framework is there for when this organization has the money to do a Senior Center. And when it does, they're going to implement the work that she did. And so, I thank you very, very much for that. There's a lot of people that matters to your efforts. And then Granny's Park. We got a grant from Kaboom. Kaboom comes in and builds playgrounds for free. I mean, obviously, it took public works and parks. We're scrambling to turn what's really just a dying grass field into a beautiful playground for kids in one of our neighborhoods that really is a little bit challenged, that could go either way. You know, it could become a great neighborhood that people take pride in, or it could become a neighborhood that we have continued challenges with. But this, if you drive by Granny's Park behind Manchester Mall, just north of there, the old Sierra Hospital, you will see a playground in a park that children use and take advantage of, and to hear their laughter, and to hear their joy, and to hear their giggling, and watch them play, and families get together in a place that was once just kind of a lot, that's because of the efforts of Alyssa Stevens. She, I don't want to take, because I want to hear from Yehira as well, but you've really, you've been here, what, two years? You've done a mountain of work in two years, and you should be proud of the things that you've done. And I thank you for joining our team, and I thank you for continuing to work hard the next 82 days, or whatever it is, that I still am in this building. So, round of applause, please, for Alyssa.
Hi, everyone. I will keep it short. I'm Yehira Figaro, the Chief of Staff, and it's also been a pleasure to work for the city of Fresno, and it's also been a wonderful pleasure to have Alyssa in our team. As we all know, it takes a group effort to get things going here, and whatever, you know, I lack or Clint lacks, Alyssa's there to pick up that, and I just appreciate her. Very young, very hungry for success, so much so that I always have, you know, we do very professional stuff, obviously, we work for our constituents, but we also have friend time where we discuss family, and we discuss whatever we need, because, you know, I always tell her, when we're here, everything comes from love, because the outside world, that's a lot of burdens to handle, but when we're here, let's do our best, let's try our best, let's smile through it all. And so, I just have to tell you that I appreciate you. You've made me a better manager, and yeah, congratulations.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the Department of Public Utilities, and we will be recognizing Joseph Hill. As one of the Solid Waste Management Division sanitation operators, Joe has shown his dedication to the division and willingness to go above and beyond the expectations to ensure the job gets done. Joe is a great example of someone who cares about the division as well as the residents of Fresno. Joe provides a great customer service on his routes and always has an infectious positive attitude. Joe also brings ideas to the division regarding customer service, job performance, and job safety. We, as a division, are grateful for employees like Joe, and we are honored to have him as part of our Solid Waste Management Division team. Okay, next, from the Department of Public Utility is Latricia William, excuse me, Lewis. My eyes are going bad here. Latricia Lewis is the UBNC Fall Employee of the Quarter for her exceptional work and ethics and fabulous attitude. Latricia came to UBNC in October 2016 and caught on very quickly. She has recently taken on important tasks of handling our online correspondence. She takes time to answer each customer with a complete and proper response and is always courteous and professional. When we are shorthanded, she is often called upon unexpectedly to help out at the front counter by taking payments from customers, which she always does with a smile. She never turns down a chance to learn something new or expand her knowledge of the division. She is a hard worker with many good ideas that she has given to management to implement and make UBNC a more efficient place to work. For these reasons and many more, she is the Fall Employee of the Quarter for UBNC. So, thank you. Also, in the Department of Public Utilities is Jeremy Jarbrow. Jeremy was selected as Employee of the Quarter for his efforts in creating new laboratory reports for the Waste Water Management Division. During the laboratory's recent LIMS software upgrade from 3.0 to 8.3, it was learned that all previously state and customer reports would need to be recreated using Jasper Soft Reports. Jeremy was asked to take on this added responsibility. He embraced the challenge, worked hard through the learning curve, persevered through aggravating setbacks, and was able to complete the task by the set deadline. Jeremy proved to be instrumental in the implementation and utilization of the new LIMS software. The laboratory and division are fortunate to have such a knowledgeable and competent technician. Next, we have Rosemary Aglannato. Rosemary is assigned to troubleshooting, repairing, and testing transmitter endpoints. She is part of four individual crews that completed over 4,000 service orders last year. Rosemary is committed to producing work on a high standard. She is always looking to improve the accuracy of her warranty returns. Recently, she eliminated some double inputting regarding warranty returns. With every transmitter warranty return, a form is filled out and placed in a clear bag with the part. Also, that same information was input into the IMS program. That step, which took hours and hours, has been eliminated after verifying with Accounting and the Warehouse Section. Rosemary's documentation standards and writing skills are also second to none. Okay, now, we're going to move over to Department of Public Works. And we're going to start with Paul Yang. Paul Yang is an outstanding resource to the Street Maintenance Administration Team and holds position of account clerk. Paul is great with decision-making. Paul is great with decision-making and her ability to complete assignments accurately. She always has a willingness to learn and in the past year, Paul has trained in accounts payable, laser fish, uniforms, and payroll, all while training a new employee to use Fresco. Paul provides excellent customer service on a daily basis and has a great working relationship with coworkers. Public Works is fortunate to have Paul as part of our team. Great job, Paul. Also in the Public Works Department is Ray Colominero. Ray is a Parks Maintenance Worker 2 in the Landscape Maintenance Division. He is dependable and efficient with his use of time, drawing on his extensive background in the landscape maintenance profession. He has taken on every challenge and assignment with a positive attitude and continues to perform at high levels. He completes his assignments on time, all while providing a safe environment for his crew members to work in on a daily basis. His work is of the highest quality and he requires the same of his crew, which is reflected in their work. Ray is a great leader, teacher, and continues to go above and beyond to provide the citizens of Fresno with the best each and every day. Congratulations. I've been notified that this next recipient will not be here today. His name is Tim Stevens. He's also in the Public Works Department and I'll just read what his coworkers wrote about him. Tim is an electrician with the Facilities Management Division, has been with us for nine years. Tim is very experienced and good at his job, so much so that he is often requested specifically by departments to address their electrical needs. Tim is being recognized by his coworkers for his ability and friendly customer demeanor. He always has a smile on his face and a good attitude and it is appreciated. Next in the Public Works Department is Shelby McNabb. Shelby is exceptional in her role as the Public Works Grants Administrator and has successfully led the Public Works team to an amazing $78 million in grants received. She is extremely organized and efficient in her use of time and resources. Her positive attitude and the passion she has for bettering the community is truly impressive. Shelby has an incredible asset to the Public Works Department and to the city of Fresno. So congratulations. Oh, and happy birthday! Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Shelby. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the Transportation Department. And we're gonna start off with Ray Flores. Is Ray here? Ray is one of the finest technicians for fax maintenance. He manifests and attributes the most desired from city employees. He enthusiastically shows up for work and his positive attitude is so contagious that fellow employees love to be around him. As a communication technician, Ray is very important part to the fax maintenance. Recently promoted, Ray inherited a radio room that was cluttered and in disarray. He quickly took ownership of the workspace by organizing his tools and parts, showing great pride in his work. Ray revealed his initiative when he took inventory of the failed digital video recorders and cameras and rebuilt them. Ray developed a preventance maintenance program for the communication equipment he is responsible for, which allows him to track and reduce the amount of corrective maintenance. Ray takes great pride in everything he does, from the tiniest test to the big projects. He equally places the same amount of effort in all tasks. The fax team wants to thank Ray for your tireless efforts and superior performance. So congratulations. Also in the Transportation Department is Davinder Kumar. Oh, he is here, okay. Davinder has been a bus driver since June 2005. Davinder will be receiving a three-year Safe Driver Award in October and was Driver of the Month in August 2018. Davinder is an excellent employee, very conscientious and dedicated. Davinder was once a small business owner and understands the importance of customer service in our industry. Davinder is a team player, gets along well with his fellow drivers and management. Davinder has repeatedly mentioned that he loves his job. He is an asset to the Department of Transportation and the city of Fresno. So congratulations. Also in the Department of Transportation is Pamela Luzano. Where's Pamela? Hey! Hi, Pamela. Pam is a self-starter. She makes the effort to make sure everything runs smoothly, even if it is not her job to do it. Pam is always cheerful and greets everyone with a smile. She also does an outstanding job of entering invoices for every park purchase, every gallon of fuel pumped, and every car washed into the database quickly and accurately. She knows when something doesn't look right and she takes the initiative to get clarification rather than making an assumption that may cost or create more work for her or others. No matter how busy she is, she is always willing to take time to help. The quality and accuracy of her work is outstanding. Thank you, Pam, for all that you do for the Municipal Fleet Division. Congratulations. And last but not least, in the Department of Transportation is Craig Patrick. Is Craig here? On August 8, 2018, the Police Department received information of one homicide suspect from Mariposa County. The suspect attempted to use an explosive device that was believed to be armed with a handgun. The SWAT team was activated to deal with the situation. However, it was discovered that the SWAT bus did not work. Craig is responsible for the maintenance of this type of specialty equipment. While at lunch, the call came in and Craig immediately recognized the severity of the situation and responded. Craig and his technician performed quick diagnostics and were able to determine the electrical system was at fault. They were able to restore power to the bus and get it operational and the SWAT bus was able to respond to the call. Craig's leadership, critical thinking, and fast-paced response were directly responsible for the SWAT bus to respond to a critical incident in the city of Fresno. Since taking over as supervisor, Craig is responsible for specialty vehicles. He has been diligent about the care and operating procedures related to the equipment and maintenance and Craig demonstrates leadership every day and quietly leaves from the front, modeling the way for his employees. He cared for those who he works around and created a positive atmosphere. So congratulations, Craig. Thanks. Okay, I believe that concludes our program for today and I'd like to invite you all out into the foyer for refreshments and we thank you very much for being here.